Okay, or is that a figment of my imagination? You sure?
Yes.
Okay. Well, welcome. What's today? October 21. Welcome to the San Mateo City Council General Meeting, October 21. And we are honored tonight to have San Mateo PD bring in the color guard. So come on down.
Welcome to us, the United States of the Pledge of Independence. Pledge of Independence to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, SMPD. Madam Clerk, shall we call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Gothols.
Here.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Maureen Friscat.
Here.
Mayor Papin.
Here. Okay. With that, I think we'll start our first ceremonial matter. And it's my understanding that there might be a pictorial proclamation. So let's dim the lights, if you will. Wow. Lot of good memories there, Missy. If you'll allow us, Maureen, we do have a resolution from the City Council that I would like to read on behalf of all of your colleagues here. Resolved by the City Council of the City of San Mateo, California, that Deputy Mayor Maureen Friscat has been an extraordinary representative on the City Council since 2011. And whereas in her eight years of service, she has demonstrated great leadership through her fearlessness and having difficult conversations when needed, while always maintaining a civil and compassionate tone, studying issues deeply, listening to constituents to seek understanding and represent their interests, and remaining undaunted in serving the community on each and every issue that arose. And whereas over eight years on council has meant that she has participated in some, are you ready? 370 meetings and made decisions on over 2,800 items, bringing her perspective, commitment, and finely honed guidance to this community while drawing on her experience as a third-generation Samatean with deep roots and personal knowledge about the community. And whereas Maureen's life experiences and professional background have enhanced her ability to understand the issues facing families and neighborhoods related to the jobs, housing imbalance, and development impacts, she has continued a lifelong dedication to at-risk youth and underserved youth. She is a strong supporter of public safety issues, remains deeply committed to infrastructure improvement balanced with fiscal integrity, and has been a tireless advocate for business as the engine that drives our local economy. And whereas Maureen's grace in delivering her thoughts through preparation for all work on the dais and keen interest in all things San Mateo meant she is a highly sought-after voice and presence for boards, meetings, and community events throughout the region. Serving on numerous bodies, including being nominated and elected twice by her San Mateo County elected peers to the San Mateo County Transportation Authority, TA, where she represented the central county with distinction and went further in representing the TA as a charter member of the San Mateo County Express Lanes Joint Powers Authority, overseeing the express lanes built, being built along the US 101 corridor in San Mateo County. And whereas Maureen's skillful representation of the city of San Mateo at the regional, state, and national level have made a difference to the services received here in the city, as well as her savviness and adroit skills in knowing just the right thing to say at the right moment and flawlessly conducting ceremonial roles, such as celebrating the 50th anniversary of the city's adoption of its unit of the 100 and, of the 1, 327th Regiment, a company of the 101st Airborne Army Division, or leading the inaugural girls softball exchange with our sister city in Toyanoaka, Japan. She forges a path of positivity and care for every interaction in every relationship the city has and is its most outstanding ambassador. And whereas during her year as mayor, she sponsored before our very eyes a countywide public awareness campaign to expose human trafficking in San Mateo County, and she spearheaded the concept of creating a memorial in Central Park to honor San Mateo's fallen military and local public safety heroes, which she will continue to lead, thank you. And she remains a key board member on the Police Activities Lead Board. And whereas while remaining involved, she is looking forward to spending more time with her husband, Andy Kreske, and her close-knit family, and especially more time to be nene to her grandson, Carson. And now, therefore, the City Council does hereby extend its deepest appreciation and gratitude for the many years of service, leadership, and graceful representation in the community given by Maureen Friscat, adopted this day, the 21st day of October, 2019, by all of your respective council members. Congratulations. Well, that's just the beginning. So I have some comments that I'd like to make separate from that, but geez, some of what I created mirrored so much of what was in our resolution. So the comments I have apply both to your substance and to your style. So I wanted to start first with your style. From the time that I first got to know you on the campaign trail, one thing I must say about you, Maureen, is that you are always prepared. I mean, without a doubt. On the council, you thoroughly read each report. You showed up here every time with your A-game, with prepared questions and prepared remarks. You have an incredible work ethic. And I just want to say that this city, they got its money's worth as it relates to you. So, and next up on the style front is your tone. And it has always been very thoughtful. You let people know that you've taken into account their perspective, and you always speak from a place of knowledge and understanding, which is to be commended. That is no easy feat when you're here in the dais and you might hear something for the first time, and you understood it, and you grasped it, and you let the public know that. You set a tremendous example. Finally, on the style front, I have to comment on your strength. You are a person of tremendous fortitude. I don't know if it's your Italian upbringing or what it is, but you have incredible and a very impressive and inspirational sense of strength. And it has been a real inspiration to serve along that kind of strength, make no mistake. Now for the substance. You've always been driven by what is best for San Mateo. And it has not ever been about you, ever. As a native Samatean, you had a good historical understanding of where we've been and how things might change in a way that is fair and respectful of the city's culture. I have learned a tremendous amount. So Ms. Maureen Friscat, it is without reservation that I say you served San Mateo with heart and distinction, and we are a much better city for the time and energy you gave us. So thank you, thank you. And then the rest of us. We'll start out in, and we'll come in.
Thank you very much. Maureen, I just had a couple of thoughts that I wanted to share. You have been a model for me, and you have always lived out the words to be, to disagree without being disagreeable. And as far as the way that you have represented San Mateo, it's always been in that model. And John Lee would be very proud of you at this moment. You have tied us to our past because you were raised here, because these schools are your schools, because so many of the people who you meet when you're walking down the street are people you've known for your entire lives. And that is something that ties us to our past. One of, two of the greatest things that I got to witness you doing as a council member were representing us anytime we had something to do with the 101st. ABU Company loves you dearly, loves you dearly. And when we were back visiting them in Tennessee, to hear you tell your story to them about the letters that you wrote when you're back in the third grade, and to listen to their stories, because they had tears in our eyes when they were thanking you for the support that you gave them back then. That is part of our past, and you celebrate that with such class and such heart. And also, our relationship with Toyanoaka, Japan. For you to go to Toyanoaka, Japan, for you to celebrate that relationship, to always make that a part of who we are as Samateans. That is you bringing out our past and tying us to previous councils. You also tie us to the future. What, some of the great things that we have accomplished in our climate action plan and sustainability efforts are things that we accomplished because of your leadership. But I want to mention something. When you first ran, you ran unopposed. I think that in part had to do because people were afraid, no, everybody knew. Everybody knew that they had no chance against you. You were coming off the planning commission. But it's also because these were dark days. It was the Great Recession. It was the worst recession of our lifetimes. And people don't always see all the work that goes into this. There's a lot behind the scenes. We have to meet with our regional bodies. We have to meet with other councils in order to get things done. You've always embodied that through the hard work. It's not just these council meetings. And so it was because everyone else was afraid to take on that role at that time. And you stepped up, and you showed us that leading us through those dark years was something that you could do with pride and with courage and with compassion, because it was a time when there were times that we took money away from our labor groups. And you never forgot that, and you always wanted to give it back once the city had the money to make good on our promises to all of our workers. So police, fire, public works, all of the employees. You were watching over them with a good heart. Thank you for that service.
Okay, go ahead. You're ready. Your tea. Go ahead.
So some of this is going to be a repeat, but I think it deserves to be said again. 370 meetings. You've, you've given your time, your energy, your focus to the city, and you've actually worked on accomplishing a lot. I know that when you, you might have run unopposed, but you had a platform, and you wanted to make this city better. And, you know, a couple of these accomplishments that you've worked with various councils to see through is the passing of Measure S, making sure that the pothole situation in our streets were better, and they're getting better every day. Setting us up to have a new water treatment plant. Grade separations on 25th, 28th, and 30th. And in your capacity on the TA, working on getting an express lane on 101. And also, too, a couple of things that I didn't hear were mentioned when you were mayor in 2015, your work on the Affordable Housing Task Force, and also initiating the community spotlight. Those are two very important things, I think, happened, among others. And then, of course, it was mentioned in the proclamation, but the Central Park Memorial to Fallen Heroes, that's your baby. That's your, that was your idea. I'm hoping that you're going to stay involved in that, to see that through, because that was basically you. A lot of this stuff was councils and stuff, but that, a lot of that was your initiative to see that happen, and that means a lot to the city. When I, when I think about what words come to mind when I'm thinking about who you are as a person and how you can conduct yourself as elected official, you know, I really think you're just such a great listener, and you're just so fair-minded. I see when we're discussing issues, or I see you're meeting with community groups, you take residents' issues as your own. You want to solve problems for residents. I mean, your passions and your priorities, whether it be our neighborhoods and our focus on our neighborhoods. I know that our neighborhoods see you as a true champion for our quality of life and public safety, of course, and of doing all of this with fiscal responsibility and, of course, supporting our business community. But what is also great about how you've served in this office is you're actually very flexible, too, and balanced. Like, I've seen you weigh both sides of the argument and change your mind and look at the evidence. You're never, you're never one of the types of elected officials where you knew exactly what they were going to vote before they came in because you listened. And that was, that was just a sight to behold. I mean, it was a wonderful role model for a newly-elected official, I could tell you that. Also, just the grace and dignity that you brought to this office. I mean, there were some highly tense times, and I've never seen you lose your cool. You've always followed the San Mateo way. And, you know, San Mateo is just so lucky to have the service of its native daughter in you. And just, I had to pare this down, so. But this is the bridge version. On a personal note, you know, I want to thank you for being among the first to encourage me to run for my first public office. Without that encouragement, I don't know if I would have decided to run. I really appreciate that. And you were an amazing mentor to me during my first campaign and my first couple of years in office. I feel very lucky, most of all, just to be, call you my friend in our friendship. San Mateo is very lucky to have had you, and we're going to miss you dearly.
I want to thank Maureen for all her many years of service to San Mateo and in all the many different ways that she has served. I am not going to repeat everything that we've heard so far. Many glowing remarks that truly reflect the dedication to service that Maureen has exhibited. And I do have to say, I have been impressed with her preparation. Maureen has her homework, she has her, everything organized. She's done all the reading. She has a response for, or questions, you know, she's prepared. So that is not an easy thing to do, because we work on, when you look at a typical agenda, there are so many different things that we really need to look at and consider and make sure that these things are being done right and that the people of San Mateo will benefit and not have difficulties if something doesn't work out here right. So I give Maureen much credit for being, as was one of John Lee's favorite statement, statements, able to disagree without being disagreeable. That I am repeating, because it is a big part of how we do things here in San Mateo. Some other cities are not quite as fortunate. I do believe that even if we disagree on something, we can find a way to work it out, and we always have. So that said, I want to thank you very truly for your many years of service. And I know that you're not going to just abandon San Mateo, that you'll always be here somewhere, your heart is rooted here. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So before we move on, may I entertain a motion to accept the resolution that we have prepared in honor of Maureen Friscat? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. That motion carries 5-0. So now, I would like to open up. You have something you need to tell me. You good?
I have quite a few speaker slips, but we wanted to start.
With a video, I believe, from someone special who couldn't join us here tonight, but wanted to come to you via video. Take it away.
Maureen, we're going to miss you. The San Mateo City Council will not be the same without you, without your knowledge, without your wisdom, without your creativity, and without your sensitivity to the community that you represent. You've done such an outstanding job of really understanding the culture and the values of San Mateo, and you've made your decisions based on those values. And I appreciate the fact that you use courage, and you don't do this when you want to make a decision. You don't look to see where the wind's blowing. You use your own judgment and what's best for San Mateo. Thank you for those years of service. We're going to miss you, and all the best to you.
So we have some resolutions from some other electeds that I'd like to, as we open the public comment. I'd like to start with those first, if that's okay. So let's start with, I do see Brian Perkins here, from Jackie Spear's staff. So please come on down, Brian Perkins. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. On behalf of Congresswoman Spear, she's placed a statement into the Congressional Record. And Maureen, you provided us, and the city provided us, with so much information that it's now an eight-point type, which is, you know, about the size of a footnote, but this is the exact opposite of what you are. You're a monument, not a footnote. So let me just read, if I can get the right distance here.
You need some reading?
Two paragraphs have a 10, yes, thank you. "Maureen has deep roots in San Mateo. Her grandparents immigrated from Italy in the 1920s, and Maureen is justly proud of her Italian-American heritage. On one occasion in recent years, she spoke movingly from the council dais about the evolution of San Mateo through the eyes of an immigrant family. She recounted the older stores and businesses that made San Mateo in the eyes of its residents in the 20s, 30s, 40s, and 50s, a place where neighborhoods and neighbors mixed freely as everyone raised families and watched generations grow through peacetime and wars. For decades, Maureen Friscat has been the quintessential pillar of the community. In America's democratic tradition, no leader can honestly say, only I can lead us, or all will perish. No one is irreplaceable. That being said, in San Mateo, Maureen is close. She wishes to spend more time with her husband, Andy, and her family. I commend her for keeping the priorities straight. However, exemplary citizenship is inspiring us to us all. Maureen will likely roar at times with her private voice, continue to lead by personal example, and thus inspire all who know her to remain engaged in the awesome task of governing this great nation." Congresswoman Jackie Spear, thank you so much for your service, Maureen.
So next up, I know that we have staff here from Senator Jerry Hill's office and some of them Kevin Mullen's office. So I will invite their two representatives to come up. And, oh my, looks like you have a wonderful resolution as well. So come on up. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Papin, and honorable members of the San Mateo City Council. My name is Elmer Martinez, and I'm Senator Jerry Hill's district representative for the city of San Mateo. It's an honor to be here tonight on Senator Hill's behalf to thank Deputy Mayor Friscat for her numerous years of public service to the city. Being an elected official is never an easy job, especially at the local level, because you balance both your day job and your responsibilities as council members. So it takes a truly special type of individual to step up and make that type of commitment to their community in the hopes that they'll make a lasting and positive change. And I believe you've accomplished that, Deputy Mayor Friscat, through the wide-reaching programs that you've supported while on city council. And while we're sad to see you go, we wish you the best of luck moving forward. Thank you very much for your service.
Kevin, are you stepping up?
On behalf of Assemblymember Kevin Mullen, I would like to echo what my colleague Elmer had said.
had said. Thank you so much for your years of dedicated service to the city of San Mateo. And as you leave your coun, as you leave the council, you do leave San Mateo a better place than when you found it. And I think as an elected official, I think that's what we can all hope for. So congratulations again.
Thank you, Kevin. All right. But next up, we got the Board of Supervisors. And we have one of our own, San Mateo's own Supervisor Carol Groom. Come on down.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I will be really brief because I know you've got a busy agenda this evening, but on behalf of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, we want to thank you, Maureen, for your lengthy service prior to serving on the council, as well as your eight years on the council. And I personally know how hard you've worked and how much you have worried about making the absolute right decision. I know you've gone here, gone here, and then come back and found the right place, but you never quit studying until you were sure that you were making the right decision for the people of this city. And all of us appreciate and thank you for that. You've been a good, good friend to this city, and I know you still will be, but thank you very much for for your service in these past eight years.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Groom. Welcome back to the chambers.
Always happy to be here.
We're happy to have you.
Next, on our speaker slip rotation, is the Police Activities League Board.
Excellent. Something near and dear to our deputy mayor's heart. Come on down.
First, thank you, Mayor Pappin, and the rest of the city council for allowing me to address this governing body. I'll keep my comments very brief, but let me say, on behalf of the San Mateo PAL Board, that we join with the city council and thank Maureen for her many years of selfless service, not just to the city of San Mateo, but to San Mateo PAL. Our partnership with the city is a critical element of our success, and Maureen has been instrumental in promoting PAL and her role on the city council. Maureen truly embodies what it means to be a public servant. She always brings compassion, wisdom, integrity to our board discussions. And I know that working with at-risk kids has been a lifelong endeavor for her. And while during her tenure at San Mateo PAL, she has transformed the lives, helped transform the lives of thousands of kids, most from disadvantaged backgrounds. So yes, we thank her for her dedication to this endeavor and to these kids. And I would like to conclude my remarks with a quote from an Indiana congressman, a recipient of the Presidential Medal of Freedom and the Jefferson Award for Public Service, Lee Hamilton. Hamilton was recognized for his lifelong dedication to public service. He said this about service to others, which I think Maureen keenly understood. "I can assure you, public service is a stimulating, proud, and lively enterprise. It is not just a way of life, it is a way to live fully." Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Profound words. The next speaker we have is Cheryl Angeles and Rovi Antonio.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, esteemed city council, Mayor Pappin, and Maureen. On behalf of the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce, we would like to thank you for your tireless efforts for the business community, all, you know, 1,200 of them, and for starting our Business Women's Women in Action program and our Community Spotlight. We appreciate you so much, and we are really going to miss you a lot.
Good evening, Mayor Pappin, members of the council. Rovi Antonio with California Apartment Association, but I'm here tonight as a, on behalf of the San Mateo Chamber Board of Advisors. And also wanted to express our thanks to you, Maureen. You've really done a great service to the business community here in San Mateo, whether it's small, you know, restaurant in downtown to housing providers in the city. You made sure that all of them had a voice here in City Hall. And thank you so much for always listening to all of us and making sure that we are part of public policy here. And with your departure, you will be missed, but I know that you will leave a legacy, a continuing legacy that the business voice is always heard and welcome here at City Hall. So on behalf of the Board in San Mateo Chamber of Commerce, thank you so much, and on a personal note, I will miss you.
We have a couple of things for you. A certificate and some flowers from one of our local businesses' blossoms that Hill still shop.
Welcome.
Hello. So I believe that everything that we wanted to say has already been said. But I will tell you, I I have never met an elected official that is more dedicated to preparing herself for her job, studying, researching, talking until late at night, and doing all of the work that you need to do. I was truly impressed by you. I've been truly impressed by you. You were my first homeowner's hero recipient, and you truly deserve it. Thank you on behalf of all of the homeowners in San Mateo. You're a wonderful elected official, and I hope you have a wonderful time in retirement.
And I also want to thank you, and I was nodding my head yes to everything that everyone said, and on behalf of my family, thank you for listening always to us, and I wish you the best always. Thank you.
Next up, we have Smuhaw.
Organization.
Mayor Pappin and council members, Maureen, it's really hard to say goodbye to somebody that who's done so much for our city and for the neighborhoods and the homeowners associations. You've always helped and listened. I'm proud to say I worked on your campaign the second time. And many of our reps couldn't be here tonight, and I know that they sent you their gratitude by way of emails. And replacing you is going to be near to impossible, but the best to you, we support you in the things that you need to do for yourself because of all the kind work that you've done. And in closing, I have to say, this is not a part-time job. We all know this. Being a council member's a full-time position. Thank you for everything you've done for the city of San Mateo and for the neighborhoods.
Our nation's second president, John Adams, wrote that government is instituted for the common good, for the protection, safety, prosperity, and happiness of the people, and not for profit, honor, or private interest of any one man, family, or class of men, or women, I guess. Your eight years on the council has reflected all that Adams held dear and all that we hold dear. And the number eight has no beginning and no end, and it is the hope for this city that all that you brought to the council seat during your tenure will be continued by your successor. Your experience, your grace under pressure, your unwavering integrity and commitment to your constituents, and your open-door policy, where residents knew they would be greeted with sincerity and warmth. These were just a few of the qualities you regularly employed, reminding us that it shouldn't matter if you sit behind the dais or stand and speak in front of it. We are all part of the same San Mateo family. Maureen, simply put, I am proud to have had you represent San Mateo residents, and I wish you all the best in your next chapter.
And, Maureen, I just want to send a special, special good luck to you as you travel around the world with your family and friends. Your smile is something that opens up the world to everyone, and your experience has given all of us so much, myself included, and I look forward to hearing what you're doing. I look forward to seeing you around town, and I also look forward to all of us being able to greet each other with the openness, the fairness, and the respect that you always showed everyone. So thank you and good luck.
So from Fiesta Gardens, we'd just like to say thank you so much for everything you've done for us and your dedicated service to the city. Your experience really shone through. You really care for people in your interactions with us. You really showed that you cared for our neighborhood, and that was very important for us personally. You always listened, you responded to emails, which is wonderful, and you were prepared to listen to us and even come to our our neighborhood to listen to our ideas as well as our concerns. And and then you would make, you would make a measured opinion after that. You wouldn't necessarily make the, make a opinion that we'd agree with or wanted, but it was definitely a measured opinion, and they were always based on what was right for Samateans in general, not just one sort of small group. And so I think moving forward, we'd love to encourage the council to select or even clone Maureen, that would be nice, you know, to to have somebody who really has the same depth of experience and particularly who has the genuine interest of Samateans at heart.
Thank you.
I get to go last, and I'll ask you all to guess who picked the flowers for tonight. But, you know, it's it's challenging to say something unique, to add on to the accolades that have been spoken tonight, but I have one comment to make. I've I've been attending city council meetings now for, what, about a year? And you've had an amazing ability to do something that is rare in this world. You listen, you synthesize, and you come to an insightful conclusion that I sit back and say, wow, that's really a great idea, that was well done. And I've said that these, to myself in these council sessions, half a dozen times. So thank you for that. Thank you for caring about the city. Thank you for caring about all the neighborhoods, and I'd like to present you these flowers from Smuhaw.
Would you all like to do a favor? Yes, thank you. Sorry. Any? 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 Next up is Papia Gamblin.
Good evening, Mayor Pappin, council members. Papia Gamblin, I live on 24th Avenue. When I moved to San Mateo 10 years ago, I was a renter, and one of the first persons I met was Maureen Freskett. You were thinking about running for council, you're contemplating all-male council at the time and and joining this council. I've been a longtime supporter of women on city council, so thank you, Mayor Pappin, for joining. And I just want to thank you for your service, your true friendship. You know I love you like a sister, and I'm just honored to see you go into this new phase in your life and enjoy your family. Thank you for everything that you've done.
And our last speaker is Dana Stor. Dana Stor.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Pappin and Council. Maureen, I just want to say thank you on behalf of myself and the San Mateo Event Center. We've worked on several projects from bringing light of human trafficking in our community to working through, providing accommodation for AMR and supporting our police and getting them respite stations. So thank you, and everybody has pretty much already issued all the accolades, but truly, it's always a joy to work with you. It's always fun to watch your brilliance and enthusiasm, and I want to thank you as a citizen and on behalf of the Event Center for all you do. Thank you.
We'll get her to stay down there. Go take a picture now. Stay down there, Maureen. We're going to come down and take a picture of you in the resolution. We'll give you an opportunity. Who will take this, Maureen? Thank you. We have one more speaker. Speakers plural.
Comes with an escort.
Okay. Take it away, chief.
Okay, great. So we we are here tonight through the Police Department with our Labor Associations, our Police Officers Association, Sergeants Association, Management Association, our executive team, the two captains and myself. You may notice some of them look a little scruffy. I can explain that. For, my patches are covered by, my pink patches are covered, but Kurt, maybe you can show off. We have for October, our Pink Patch Month, which is for women's, women's health. And then we go right into Movember, which is for men's health, and it's a growing of the facial hair, which was quite a big deal for our department. This is our first year, both for the pink patch and for allowing facial hair. Thus, you see the exciting level of beards that you will only see for one month. I gave him a head start because some people seem to need it, so.
That's right.
So we actually have a bit of a head start, and, you know, there there was kind of no question. We sort of started this tradition with Larry Patterson, and we got him a command staff jacket, and there was no question when we heard that Mayor, Deputy Mayor Freskett was retiring, that she has carried and championed public safety, police causes, as well as really juvenile and criminal justice for many, many years. Some of you may not know, I knew her in another life from the Juvenile Justice Commission that she served so well and so passionately for. And so it's no small, small statement to say that her passion for justice, criminal justice, juvenile justice, and for those disenfranchised is, is second to none. And it was with delight, as she came into the council, that we were able to see that she carried that passion, that wisdom, and that inquisitiveness with every topic that she embraced. And for Maureen, just speaking as the staff sort of representatives here tonight, department heads and those on the the different staff, you have always not only had that open door and concern and wherewithal for staff, but you have sought to truly understand the experiences that we have had as well. And so for all of that, I want to just say, on behalf of the Police Department, our Labor labor associations, thank you so much for your leadership, for bringing public safety really to not only the forefront but to making sure there was a champion for it and to really always seeking to understand with grace and with class. So, as a personal and professional colleague, I want to thank you so much for your dedication, and we have a couple more folks who'd like to say something.
Deputy Mayor, on behalf of the Police Officers Association, I'm here to thank you. In the police world, we say we have your six, and we know that you've had our six this whole time. We definitely know that you are one of our allies, and I want to thank you for your many years of support to our association, and we will dearly miss you.
Councilwoman Fresket, just want to thank you on behalf of the Management Association, which represents the police lieutenants and captains. Again, so many things have been said tonight, and it's hard to add to an already long list, but for on so many different levels, you have been there for us and have been a champion, again, not only for us but for all of public safety here in the city of San Mateo. We can't thank you enough for the dedication. We know that it comes from the heart because we can feel that every time we've talked to you, every time you've asked a question about what council could do to better support us, and we knew it was genuine. And so, thank you very much. All the best, and your next adventures.
And so, if you could come down at this point, we know that while you may be leaving the dais, you will not leave your patrol and your passion for public safety here in the city of San Mateo. So, we have a little patrol jacket for you, Deputy Mayor.
So, as you can see, it has our San Mateo Police Patch and M. Fresket, just in case anyone cannot remember who you are as you were out there on patrol with us.
Do I get some stars and badges?
Not exactly. You can have the colors overlined. There you go. You get a pink patch from us.
That's what I think.
We have no other speaker slips.
Excellent. So, with that, I think we'll bring it back to the council and perhaps some comments from our deputy mayor. We're ready for you.
Thank you. So, I hope I can get through my comments without crying. This has been very emotional. I'm just really very grateful. So, I want to start off, thank you, Patrice, for that beautiful tribute. It was very moving. I was crying through the whole thing, so. And I want to thank my colleagues and members of the community for your kind words and messages. They have all meant so much to me. So, tonight is very difficult for me because I have mixed emotions. You know, on one hand, it's really hard to leave this position that I've loved and held for eight years. It's been a huge part of my life. But on the other hand, I'm very excited about starting the next chapter of my life. When I first ran for this seat eight years ago, I never could have imagined the amazing challenges, the rewards, the demands that lay ahead. Early support from Congresswoman Jackie Speer, strong encouragement from Supervisor Mike Nevin, and wise mentoring from Senator Jerry Hill were key factors in that life-altering decision, and I will always be grateful to them. And I want to recognize our county supervisor and board president, Carol Groom, who has always been there for me with an open ear. When I first took office, I talked about the San Mateo I knew as a child and how vastly different our city had become in 2011. San Mateo would not have become the vital and thriving community as today without continuous change, and that remains the one constant we can always count on, whether we like it or not. We have witnessed unprecedented change in San Mateo in recent years, physically, environmentally, economically, culturally, socially, politically, and this will continue well into the future. The San Mateo I know has always been changing, dynamic and diverse, but never divided. Despite occasional disagreements on strategy, San Mateo has steadfastly embraced our strong core values of inclusivity and quality of life for all our residents, and I'm confident we will continue to move forward together, thoughtfully, towards a bright future for all San Mateans. I am gratified the goals I set when I initially ran in 2011 have been largely achieved, the infrastructure improvements that will serve San Mateo for decades to come, solid fiscal footing and strong reserves, top-notch police and fire services, huge strides in sustainability, downtown revitalization, and record housing growth. And as mentioned, I am excited we're moving forward on the design of the memorial honoring San Mateo's fallen heroes, and that will be located in the Rose Garden or by the Rose Garden in Central Park, and I will continue to serve as chair of that committee because it's so dear to my heart. I was very honored to represent San Mateo and the central cities on the San Mateo County Transportation Board, and I've been especially proud to be a charter member of the Joint Powers Authority for the one-on-one managed lanes. So, it really is truly rewarding to participate in several major, long-awaited traffic mitigations on the peninsula. You know, as a city, we've made significant progress in addressing the pressing social and economic issues of our time, and San Mateo's leadership on regional initiatives is widely recognized. That's a tribute to our council and to our outstanding city staff now capably led by Drew Corbett. Drew had big shoes to fill figuratively and literally, but he hit the ground running, has done impressive job this past year as our city manager. And while all of our staff deserve kudos, I want to give a special shout-out and thank you to City Attorney Sean Mason for his wise guidance and counsel, and I want to acknowledge City Clerk Patrice Olds for her tireless efforts overseeing council business, keeping us updated and informed. Thank you, Patrice. I greatly appreciate all that you and your staff, Joan, Erin, and Alicia do for the council. And I would be remiss if I did not mention Larry Patterson. I see Larry in the audience, the man at the helm for most of my tenure, an exemplary city manager who drove consensus and cohesion among all moving parts of the city, including San Mateo's incomparable police and fire departments. With the exceptional leadership of Chief Susan Manheimer, San Mateo stands as a national model of modern community policing and youth services, and under Chief John Healy's capable command, we saw the successful consolidation of three fire departments and enhanced responsiveness in three cities. So, how fortunate are we to have been, had these two public safety icons in San Mateo? And I just want to congratulate both of them on their well-earned retirements at the end of the year. These have also been eight years of significant personal growth and impact for me. Since 2011, I have run for election twice, served as deputy mayor twice, spent a very memorable year as mayor, retired from my 23-year career at Notre Dame Denny Moore University, was crowned Queen Isabella, something special for my Italian heritage, and rode in the Italian Heritage Parade in San Francisco, sadly lost both of my beloved parents, became a doting grandmother, and I got married twice, both times to the same wonderful husband. I want to thank my colleagues for their dedication, hard work, and the personal sacrifices they and their families make in order to serve on council. Diane, Eric, Joe, Rick, I want you to know I take with me the greatest respect and gratitude for the devotion to duty and great service that each of you give to San Mateo. It really has been an incredible honor serving with you. Diane, I will not be here on the dais for the reorganization since my last official day on council is October 30th, so I want to take this opportunity to congratulate you on a stellar year as mayor. I had very little to do in my role as deputy mayor. You jumped in fully to the role of mayor. You attended every event, and you enjoyed your term to the fullest. So, you rock, girl. Congratulations on a very successful year. And then I especially want to acknowledge the love of my life, my extraordinarily patient and loving husband, Andy, who has been unfailingly supportive and is here this evening, and I also want to acknowledge my amazing daughters, Nicole and Kristen, who are also here tonight, for standing by me with love and understanding, and my son-in-law's Miguel, who's here, and Nick, who is home caring for my adorable four-year-old grandson, Carson, who is a precious source of joy and laughter. I mean, there is nothing than better than being a grandma, or in my case, Nini, as my grandson has named me. As we all know, our network of friends is so important and special to all of us, and I thank mine for their support. But I especially want to thank my dear friend, Carol Conroy, who has been an incredible anchor to me from day one. Finally, and most importantly, I want to thank the broad base of political and civic leaders, organizations, neighborhood leaders, San Mateo residents, and business owners who have supported me throughout the years and put their faith and trust in me to do the right things, even when the choices were difficult, as they often were. So, if there's a single word to describe how I feel tonight, it is proud. Proud to have been born and raised in this beautiful city, proud of the family that I raised here, proud to have served on this council and as mayor of the city I love, and proud of all the wonderful people here in San Mateo that make this the Bay Area's most desirable place to live and work. Thank you, San Mateo, for the great privilege of serving you. I take with me a lifetime of incredible memories.
While you remain standing, it is with our great honor, each and every one of us that have had the privilege of serving with you, to give you a memento of our appreciation that we hope will be displayed proudly in your home. Thank you, Ms. Maureen Fresket, for all of your service.
Beautiful.
In keeping with that sort of infinity, as it were.
Like an ocean wave.
And then we also would like, if you don't mind, we have a little something for Andy also, for all of his support for one of our treasured colleagues, and we wish you guys nothing but a boatload of fun. So, I'm going to just go down and give this to Andy, and then we will move on. You can go ahead and sit down. So, we do have just a very short agenda this evening, so let us move on to that so that we can put Maureen to work one last time before she leaves us. Come again?
Maybe mention the reception.
Oh, sorry. I want to make sure that everyone knew that just following our very short meeting, we're going to have a reception, and I'm all about the party, aren't you? Please stay and please join us to celebrate all the service that we have gotten from our deputy mayor. So, with that, I will just move on to consent calendar very quickly. Madam Clerk, please list off our consent calendar.
All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item two, Community Relations Commission Subcommittee Recommendation. Item three, Grand Jury Report, Electric Vehicle Adoption in the Cities and Counties of San Mateo Response Letter. Item four, Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act Letter of Support, as amended on the dais. United Against Hate Week Resolution of Support. Item six, Service Employees International Union Local 521 Maintenance Unit Memorandum of Understanding Amendment. Item seven, Edward Byrne 2019 Justice Assistance Grant Program Application. Item eight, Office of Traffic Safety Grant Spending Plan. Item nine, Contracts and Contingency Component and Update. Item 10, Program Management Clean Water Program Amendment. Excuse me. Item 11, Police Department Substation and Sleeping Quarters Appropriation and Contract. Item 12, Fire Station 25 Budget Appropriation and Contract. And item 13, Fire Station 25 Professional Architectural Services Amendment.
Great. Do we have anybody that wants to take any item off the consent calendar? Hearing then, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes unanimously. So, we'll move on to the one item that we do have. No, we'll move on to public comment. Any public comment? Great.
I'm sorry, Mary, do have some public comment slips. John Fasula, followed by Rosen McGurney, and then Mary Rose Laberan, and then Rich Hedges.
So, we got four. Okay, come on down. We'll have the three that are up on deck stand over to my right, your left, and we'll start with the first speaker. Welcome.
Esteemed council, Mayor Pappen.
Yes.
My name is John Fasula, and first of all, congratulations on your retirement. Wonderful, eight years.
Move it up.
There you go. Perfect.
Better? Congratulations on your eight years. That wonderful time. I, myself, have been living in my apartment complex for eight years, and as of October 1st, I was told I was evicted with no cause after, again, eight years. The reason, as I see it now, is as a result of the AB 1482, the rent control bill, and I sent all of you an email, October 4th, to update you on that in concern, not only for myself, but I'm sure there's others that are facing the same issue. I'm a 70-year-old senior, have worked in three school districts as a substitute, and to that extent, obviously, was a little dismayed when I found out that I was being evicted. Some cities have taken on emergency ordinances to try and stop landlords from circumventing the law that goes into effect January 1st, and so my hope is that the city of San Mateo will do likewise. At this stage, as I understand, Los Angeles has taken on that eviction process. Daly City has an emergency ordinance they're looking at, as does Redwood City per the Daily Journal's last Thursday paper. So, again, my question to you as a group, as a body, is if you have given thought and are giving thought to the renters in the area that will be evicted and may have to leave the area accordingly. I've lived in this area for 15 years. Obviously, I'd prefer not leaving, and particularly, working in three local school districts, it would be a challenge for me to make a commute from any other area. So, that's my question to you, and hopefully, you can address that ordinance. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Rosen McGurney.
Good evening. My name is Rashine McElrany, and I'm a junior at Aragon High School. I've been promoting the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act with Citizens Climate Lobby since it got introduced last January, and I had the amazing opportunity to lobby members of Congress for it in DC. I also helped organize Aragon for the climate strike last month, and I'm promoting actions for climate solutions within my school. But marches aren't solutions. The global crisis must be solved through concrete legal action, a commitment from our lawmakers and representatives that they care about our health and safety. Here in the Bay Area, we live in one of the wealthiest places in the US. The world looks to us to set an example, not only in our amazing advancements in technology but as leaders in policy.
Rich Hedges is the next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Pappan and city council members. I'm here tonight to thank people. Not often in this day and age do we hear people thank one another more than they complain to one another. We had a problem recently where I live at Harbertown. We've had about 10 years trying to get our walkway that was entitled only as a walkway. It's four feet wide, half the space of a legal bike lane, and it appeared, when we had our consultants about 10 years ago, they decided to put on a map. Two different meetings with the consultants told me it would be removed, it was never removed. Two attempts through a current employee who's no longer here to get it removed, I was assured it'd be removed. I saw it again on our new bike map. So I was a little frustrated. I sent a letter, you may have seen a copy of it, and very quickly, it was acted upon, and I want to thank Drew Corbett, Brad Underwood, and Sean Mason for the quick action they did in contacting the Public Works Department, having it removed. It's very dangerous, it's a twisting walkway. We invite the whole city to come and walk along our waterway, they're welcome to bike through, but the city does not allow it, nor does the state, and I think it probably puts the city in somewhat of illegal jeopardy if someone gets hurt on it, having it in the bike map and yet not being a legal bike lane. So I think it was a wise move for everybody to get it out. We also had one complaint that Sean Mason had to deal with a while back from a local citizen who wasn't, didn't think they were allowed to go through, and it was our fault, which it's not. So I want to thank, thank you all for all the work you're doing. I particularly want to thank Maureen tonight from the labor community for all the votes she's taken that helps support the 101 unions, the members that struggle, like this gentleman we just heard tonight, to live here in San Mateo, and also voting to increase the minimum wage here in San Mateo, a city that has led on that. There are a lot of Me Too cities now that are doing it, but I have to really congratulate all of you for being the first city to do it. And I just want to thank the whole council for the great council and the great city that I live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to the council.
I'm sorry, there is one more.
Oh, apologies.
United Against Hate, who arrived a little bit late, they want to speak quickly.
Okay, great. And you just adopted your resolution on the consent calendar, correct?
I hope so.
All right, so lay on your video.
People are victimized in the past because of who they are and what they want. Muslims, Americans, Palestinians, or...
Synagogues, we've seen a rise in hate crimes.
I've witnessed how things have changed.
Growing up as an LGBT kid in the Midwest, I faced homophobia at an early age.
I often feel unsafe, and I'm sure there are other people who feel unsafe around me, and that makes me sad.
No one should be killed because of the color of their skin.
No one should feel uncomfortable leaving their home.
I'm not safe, you're not safe.
We have to stand up for each other.
Whether it's calling it, reporting, being a witness, standing on the sidelines is not an option.
Come together with other Bay Area communities.
And say that we protect you in our town and that you're welcome here.
We stand united against hate.
Join us for a week of action, November 11th to 18th, as we stand united against hate.
Learn about local action at unitedagainsthateweek.org.
Excellent. Glad you're here, welcome.
Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here as you honor this wonderful councilwoman. And so much of what you spoke about tonight was courage and value, so I do feel comfortable bringing up an uncomfortable topic, which is hate.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, we'll get you unfettered.
There we go.
Okay, please proceed.
My name's Patrice O'Neil. I direct an organization called Not in Our Town. We work with communities all over the country who are standing up to hate. I'm going to Pittsburgh this week to be with the families and community of Pittsburgh as they remember one year ago when 11 people were killed. We know what's at stake, we've seen it here in our own state and across the country and around the world. I had the honor of meeting city leaders from across the Bay Area in 2017 after Charlottesville. The city of Berkeley was the first to say, what could we do for our own residents, for our own citizens, who want to stand up to hate but may not want to go out and protest, may not want to be in the kind of situation that we saw in Charlottesville? And so they came up with an idea of putting posters in their windows, and this spread all across the East Bay, to cities all across the East Bay, spread to San Francisco. We gathered them in our office in Oakland, and we said, where did the posters come from? What do you want to do next? And they said, we want to do more. It's more than just a poster. We know that the harm of hate is not just these violent eruptions, it's how we treat each other day to day. We have to be conscious of that. We have to do more as local communities to help our residents stand up together. That's how United Against Hate Week was born. We had our first year last year, 25 cities, including San Francisco, the East Bay, and Marin. This year, San Mateo, we're so honored, is joining this effort, and there are five other cities on the peninsula so far that will be part of Bay Area United Against Hate Week. We are honored that you're joining us, and we hope that you can find a new way for people to become involved. So for our residents who want to learn about what they can do, you can go to unitedagainsthateweek.org. There are 20 ideas for action, and we're so grateful for this. I want to present you your first starter packet of posters for the city of San Mateo. Thank you.
Excellent, we'll take it. Thank you for being here. With all of us, we're gonna come down and take a photo of you with the poster, and then we will move on to a couple other items. Come on in. Come on in, put the center. There we are, perfect. And thank you so much for being here. Before we move on, there were a couple public comments, one dealing with an emergency ordinance on the eviction in AB 1482. Is there any interest in having our city man, excuse me, our city attorney perhaps look into that?
Yes.
Yes? Anybody else? Yes? 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 Okay, so we would like to look into that, to see if an emergency ordinance could be helpful to our residents if they're being evicted without cause before 1482 takes effect on January 1. The other item we had before we move on is a letter of support, in support of HR 763. Is there any consensus to take that up and adopt a letter in support of that resolution? Or have we already done it? You look like we've already done it.
It was on the consent calendar.
It was on the consent calendar, I'm so glad we've already done it.
Yes.
I love that we streamlined the process. It's our pleasure to support it. Alan, I see you there. So thank you, thank you. So now we'll move on to, a public comment is closed, we have no other speakers, so let's, I know you're waiting anxiously, Mr. Underwood, our chair of, our head of the Public Works Department, and a new grandfather. So welcome.
Thank you. Honorable mayor and city council members, Brad Underwood, Public Works Director, it's a pleasure to be before you to, Deputy Mayor, this is a, I can't think of a better item for you to consider, or your last item to consider, than what we call UFFIS, or Underground Flow Equilization System Project. I'm gonna go through this hopefully rather quickly. The overview of the topics tonight, I'll give you some background on the project, a little bit about the EIR comments that you're considering tonight, some about the construction monitoring we'll be doing over the project, community engagement, and hopefully achieving your approval tonight. So just a little bit reminding you about the project. So our cease and desist order required us to eliminate sanitary sewer overflows. So the key provisions there required us to take a look at capacity assessments, to identify areas where we have inflow and infiltration, and then bottlenecks within the system. The capacity assurance addresses the INI, and also addresses the peak flow conveyance issue. Our CDO actually allows us flexibility in determining the final approach and how we deal with these items. So this is just a list over the last decade of the multiple studies that have been undertaken to update our model within the system, about the flows within the system, and evaluate inflow and infiltration. This has resulted in validating the need for the UFFIS by several different professional consultants, as that work has been completed. One of the studies in the table that I just showed you was done by West Yost and ADS, and that study was done in 26, 2017, and it focused on some sub-basins. So this actually addresses some of the studies that were recommended in the 2014 master plan, specifically the Shoreview-Las Prados areas and the San Mateo Village area. I'm just gonna walk you through a little example of some more detailed research that was done, further study done by West Yost. This included some smokes testing, and some videos, and other fieldwork that occurred. And in the table there, it shows you what that results of that pilot study were for the Shoreview-Parkside area, the area there in pink. So the results recommended that all the sewers in the area be replaced, and some of that also had to deal with sewer lines that were in backyards that would be moved toward the end of the street, which also would require some, the laterals to be rerouted. So that resulted in about 1.2 million gallon per day flow decrease within the system, at a cost of about $40 to $60 million, a very large cost. When you look at the UFFIS project column, we're gonna build a 5.3 million gallon tank, capacity tank, that'll store about 20 million gallons per day, and I'll show you that, what that means on the next slide, at a cost of about $50 million. So the studies have shown that significant flow reduction would likely not be achieved with focused INI projects. You can see, we get to achieve a $1.2 million at a great cost. So we look at, you know, what are we gonna achieve through that and at what cost? So we do a little bit of cost benefit analysis. So that's why we're doing some things within the system still. So we have really done this comprehensive approach to work at the treatment plant, within the collection system, to assure that we have capacity and to address the inflow and infiltration. This map shows our annual rehab program. These are two basins that we have, the C Basin and D Basin. These are currently in construction right now, and this is gonna repair critical defects within these basins. So we are working on the inflow and infiltration on an annual basis. So this is what we're dealing with here, flow management into the system. So this graph shows you at the top, the 98 million gallons per day that we believe will occur on a five-year, six-hour storm. So not a, not a huge storm, we're not talking 100-year storm here, we're talking something where we can actually anticipate that might occur rather frequently, but that we'll be able to handle within the system. So this, and then, and then we're, we can, the way the system is designed is we can achieve 78 million gallons, we can deliver that to the wastewater treatment plant, and the other, the other 20 million gallons per day, or the flow rate of 20 million gallons a day will be stored in the UFFIS. So we have 5.3 million gallons of volume that can handle 20 million gallons per day of flow, and that's the hatched green area. So we're gonna take that off the top, so the system can act appropriately. You can tell I've been spending some time with grandkids, I'm coming up with a cartoon here for you, but this is our current condition. We basically, under the, under the design storm, have 98 million gallons per day we're gonna have to deal with. We only have 60 million gallons of capacity at the treatment plant, and as you all know, our outfall is only 60 million gallons as well. So we have the arrow there, sanitary sewer overflows that occur on an annual basis. So we came to you with two options. This one is the full conveyance alternative. This one would have transported all that 98 million gallons per day to the wastewater treatment plant, where we'd have to build a large storage tank of 38 million gallons per day, or about a 10 million gallon tank. It would have required some of the large pipes to be upgraded, a crossing of 101, the Dale Avenue Pump Station, which would need major upgrades and likely acquire some additional property there, so that we could actually build a large enough pump station. And this is the, this is the alternative that we've, that you all approved. This is actually storing within the system. So this was the preference that came before you in the June 2016 Programmatical EIR, and most recently, in our NPDES permit for the treatment plant in 2018, it authorized this approach. This provides the most cost-effective and resilient solution. So again, this provides the 20 million gallon storage within the system, within the collection system, then delivering 60 million, 78 million gallons per day to the treatment plant, where 60 of it can be treated, and 18 million gallons can be stored there as well, because we have some storage at the wastewater treatment plant. Now, again, just a reminder of the five-year, six-hour storm, not a huge storm we're talking about here, and what we don't know is what's climate change going to do, do in the future? You know, we've been told, you know, there might be more frequent and intense storms coming our way, and when the reductions to INI are made within the system, which we do definitely want to make, it provides actually extra capacity to handle this uncertainty of these future storms. So tonight, we're asking the council to take these actions, to approve the final environmental impact report for this project, the site plan and architectural review for the project, and the special use permit for the project. The Planning Commission approved these items on September 24th. So the proposed project is, as you can see from the map, we have some sewer lines that will be installed in Delaware and in Saratoga. The yellow there is the site of the underground tank, and so that's basically what the project, the areas the project deals with. For the EIR, we had many comments on the EIR, we received over 500 comments. Many of those comments fit into main categories, and we considered all of the comments. The master responses were found in two locations in the document, the executive summary and Appendix F. We took a comprehensive approach to the construction of the project and monitoring, and we worked through the concerns with adjacent neighborhoods. So those deal with all these items here, noise, dust, settlement, vibration, traffic issues, and the actual pipeline construction. You can see on the map the different monitoring we plan on setting out there, so that we can monitor and make sure we're achieving the goals that we want to do for the project. This is what the final site looks like, pretty mundane, most things are underground, there will be an electrical building, but yeah, there's not, not a lot there. I do want to say and thank the event center for working with us, and also the communities, the nearby communities, to improve the final product, where we've committed to installing some CMU walls and adding some additional trees to promote the long-term screening of the, of the facility. Pretty robust community engagement, over 50 community meetings that we had, I think I attended probably most of those. The community engagement doesn't stop at the EIR. Many of those comments fit into main categories, and we considered all of the comments. The master responses were found in two locations in the document, the executive summary and Appendix F. We took a comprehensive approach to the construction of the project and monitoring, and we worked through the concerns with adjacent neighborhoods. So, those deal with all these items here, noise, dust, settlement, vibration, traffic issues, and the actual pipeline construction. You can see on the map the different monitoring we plan on setting out there, so that we can monitor and make sure we're achieving the goals that we want to do for the project. This is what the final site looks like. Pretty mundane, most things are underground, there will be an electrical building, but yeah, there's not, not a lot there. I do want to say and thank the Event Center for working with us, and also the communities, the nearby communities, to improve the final product, where we've committed to installing some CMU walls, and adding some additional trees to promote the long-term screening of the, of the facility. Pretty robust community engagement, over 50 community meetings that we had, I think I attended probably most of those. The community engagement doesn't stop at the EIR. I want to thank the residents for coming in, some of their, spending some of their evenings in our office to talk about some of the concerns. But here, we now must deliver on the commitments we've made on this project. Again, the quest of the council before you is certify the final impact report, the adoption of the statement of overriding considerations, approval of the site plan and architectural review, and approval of the special use permit. With that, I'll take any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, questions, questions? Yes?
Yeah, hi. Thank you, thank you Brad, for the report there. I want to say that it certainly has been, as you described, monumental task over many years.
Thank you. Large monumental task over many years. And a lot of people have looked at this very closely, and I think we've made a lot of progress in bringing the public along for something that was kind of hard for them to understand. But, but, and I'm not, I want to make sure I'm, you know, not trying to, I don't feel ungrateful for this. I think that we need to make sure we have a great wastewater treatment plant project, the overall clean water project, including whatever it takes to reduce our flows, our peak wet weather flows to the plant. So, I've been looking at this very closely for a little while, and talking with some people, and I have really mainly just one question, and it's really foundational, okay? It has to do with the $98 million, 98 million a gallon, projected peak wet weather flow for 2035. And the question is really, where did that figure come from? So, I've looked, I've looked at the Corolla report of 2014, I've looked at CH2M's report of 2015. The Corolla report is not really definitive in where it comes from. They talk about, and I'm going to read a part of this here, because I think everybody should understand why I'm concerned. "The wastewater treatment plant flow projections and potentially facility requirements may be adjusted. Several studies are included in the recommendation capital improvement project to determine the exact sub-basins to be rehabilitated for INI, inflow and infiltration reduction. The costs of the projects and the anticipated benefits associated with the projects." Until the studies are completed, two locations have been tentatively identified for potential sub-basin rehab, that's Shoreview-Los Prados and San Mateo Village, west of Highway 101. These areas may benefit from a focused INI reduction effort. So, I think you indicated that at least one of these projects was completed, right? That was the Shoreview Park?
The study of that project was completed. It resulted in some great cost that would, wouldn't yield the benefit. So, that table I showed earlier that has the, see if I can go back to that table. The study showed that it would yield about 1.2 million gallons per day in reduction, which we didn't feel was significant enough to proceed with the $40 to $60 million project. But we are taking care of key aspects that we know of within that area from the studies that we've done, that's basically included in this basin C.
So, there's a plan for reducing INI from that part of the city, right there?
Yes, yes, definitely. Every part of the city, we do that.
Yeah, okay. Well, anyway, that study was done, and then I guess it recommended a study here in the Corolla 2014 report also, the San Mateo Village West. Has that study been done?
Yeah, that was part of, that was part of, that was part of the West Yoast study here in 2017.
Okay. So, that's good, I'm glad we did those studies. But my question still goes back to, if you read the 2014 Corolla report, you see that the peak wet weather flow report itself was never finalized, and this is evident in the summary, the executive summary in the 2015 CH2M report. It says that, while never finished, the Corolla 2014 report, talking about peak wet weather flow, while never finished, integrated wastewater master plan of 2014. So, my question is really foundational. Where did the 98 million gallon per day peak wet weather flow that we've been working with since a long time now, where did that really come from?
I'm going to ask Azalea Mitch, Deputy Director, come up and answer your question.
Good, thank you.
Good evening, council members. The 90, Azalea Mitch, Deputy Public Works Director, the 98 million gallons a day comes from our hydraulic model. We've had a working model since 2001, and that model has been upgraded through, for the last, you know, close to 20 years. Currently, what we do is we, there was a picture, and maybe if you can go back to it, Brad, there. We've done many years of flow studies, and that means during wet weather, we have meters in the sewer system that record flow, and that flow is used to calibrate the model. We work with NOAA, data from NOAA, to predict, under a five-year, six-hour storm, what that flow would be entering the system, and that's where the 98 MGD comes from. It comes from the working hydraulic model that's, has been calibrated and validated throughout the years.
Okay, so you're saying that we actually metered flow?
Yes, so that picture that is up there.
In all of those numbered locations?
Mm-hmm, yes, that. So, the last effort that we did, 2016, we had about 16 sites, then 2018, we had 35 sites throughout the system, where we recorded flow to capture the storm events.
Okay. Those are my questions for now.
Thank you. Any more questions? Questions, questions, questions? Okay. Do we have public comment, Madam Chair?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have three speakers. First speaker, Lisa Diaz Nash, followed by Jonathan Scharfman, and then Richard Neve.
Okay, great.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to speak out in favor of approving this. As I love to say, and many people around the world love to say, water is life. This is all about life. This project is well-researched and thoughtfully developed, upholds our city's values of sustainability, planning for the future, flexibility, and caring for every citizen's input. As Director Underwood said, there were a plethora of community meetings, and for good cause. There was a tremendous amount of community concern, and a lot of issues were worked through, and ideas developed as a result of those meetings, and I think that's the way projects like this should go, and I would just like to voice my support for your approval.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, Jonathan Scharfman.
Madam Mayor, Council, I'm here to support the certification of the final EIR and to move this project forward. I represent Bay Meadows Neighborhood Alliance, and I really want to commend staff, especially you Drew, and, and your consultant team, for really listening, and taking, taking the extra time after hours to respond to what we believe were legitimate concerns, along with our neighbors at Fiesta Gardens and Smuha. It was, it was not an easy process, but ultimately, we felt heard, and we believe that the mitigations that even, even came after some last-minute suggestions at the Planning Commission meeting were, were well-considered and, and much appreciated. So, many thanks, and Godspeed on getting this going, and, and we'll be, we'll be talking, I'm sure, as it goes. Thank you.
And Richard Neve.
Hi. Richard Neve here, from Fiesta Gardens, I'm Civics Director. This is going to be one of those rare moments of saying thank you. Again, that's two tonight, that's a win, that's two tonight, right? So, you know, Fiesta Gardens would love to take this opportunity to thank city employees for their hard work on this project. From the beginning, it was a contentious project, you had, you know, you had a room full of green shirts here when it first was, was bought up, and, you know, building such a large structure near residential neighborhoods is obviously not very popular for those proximal to that site. So, while the existing plan still holds concerns for us, you know, I think us, and you just heard from Bay Meadows, but Fiesta Gardens would like to acknowledge the extensive outreach from Drew, and from Brad, and their teams to resolve our concerns. They really have gone above and beyond to address the concerns. We believe that they've developed a plan that will greatly mitigate the impact on our neighborhoods. This is really an exemplary model of how city employees can work together with neighborhoods and residents, and we want to thank you for those long hours, those late meetings, you know, and, and just that willingness to listen, and to have the best interests of the residents at heart, that was really important to us, thank you. And we look forward to, you know, continuing to work with you through the implementation of this project, and see it to its successful completion. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other public figures?
No.
Okay. So, we'll bring it back to the council, I just want to follow along Mr. Neve's comments. I'm going to start, but I know I'll get to everyone else, I promise, but I think this is an example of the best that municipal government can be, both with respect to the ultimate service that it provides, but the process along the way, so that we do not disturb our neighbors, or it's a minimal disturbance to our neighbors. So, I'm enormously proud of the work that was done. I want to give other council members a chance to speak, but I just had to jump in right away, such as the mayor's prerogative. Councilmember Goethels, would you like to speak?
Yes, please.
Madam Mayor, I have one more question.
Oh, apologize.
I think might help clarify some things.
Certainly.
Okay. The model that we've been using since 2001, I guess, was also used for the 2014 SEQA report. Has that, has that, is there a report, is there a finished product? Is there something that we can point out and say, this definitely says 98 million gallons, peak wet weather flow? Something we can point at, hold in our hand, that says there's an author, there's a conclusion? Is there something that says that?
Yeah, as Deputy Director Mitch had spoken to, the model is really that document that we have, that we've used throughout the years. That model was used by Corolla to develop the 98 million gallons that was, again, looked at by CH2M in 2015, a year later. And then, it's been revalidated based on those flow monitoring we've done. So, that's really the document that we utilized to affirm that that, that number is correct.
And Corolla based that number on what?
The, they based that number on the, the flow model that we have.
Okay, thank you.
So, the hydraulic model's confirmed, correct?
Yes, several times over.
Thank you. Councilmember Goethels, I'll turn it over to, no more questions? Okay, go ahead.
I want to echo the praise for staff. I think that the staff did an outstanding job with the outreach to the community, bringing all the neighborhoods onboard, working through the various sites that were proposed, and really listening to the community. So, I echo the praise for you and for everyone. But I also want to thank Drew and Brad and Azalea Mitch for answering my personal questions. I saw the questions that were brought up at the Planning Commission, I met with Commissioner Ebner personally, I shared the concerns that Councilmember Benia has, and I was able to ask all those questions throughout this week, and I felt that all of those questions were answered sufficiently, and I really appreciate all the work that went into this. My concern is really not that the plant is too small, or, excuse me, that the plant is too big, but that the plant is too small, that the peak wet weather flow is, is really based on retrospective data and not prospective data, and that climate change will have a significant effect. But one of the most significant things to me in the presentation that you gave us, and in the reports, is that there are sub-basins. And so, it's not that the wastewater treatment plant can hold all of the capacity, there are bottlenecks within the system, and you need to hold that capacity within the system, and that's what this does. So, I appreciate all of your efforts to make sure that, that we avoid sanitary sewer overflows. I move approval of this item on the agenda.
Comments?
I'd like to make a couple comments.
You can go ahead first.
I mean, everything has been said, but I will just say, after that initial Planning Commission, my inbox lit up like, like you couldn't imagine, and as I, as I dug into the, I did my own fact-finding mission, and, and trying to understand what, what all the issues were about, because I wasn't able to watch that meeting, I, I was amazed with just how the neighborhoods came together in a very constructive way, and worked with city staff to work out these issues, and it's, and this was not easy to work out, it took hours and hours and hours. And to echo our mayor's comments, this is how the system's supposed to work, and it's this kind of a beautiful thing when it happens. And thank you so much for your department's time, and thank you to the neighborhoods of Fiesta Gardens, Bay Meadows, of course, and Smuha. Thank you very much.
So, I want to say, you know, I'm half-Irish, and I was very happy not to see a sea of green in here this evening. So, I, I really do appreciate all the hard work, because I know this has been difficult. And I want to thank the residents who I know are going to be impacted by this, some of whom I know personally. This is part of that change I was talking about that happens, sometimes not everyone's happy, but this is not something we can kick the can down the road, it really has to be done. And so, just, I want to thank people that will be inconvenienced by some of the noise and sound in advance for making that sacrifice on behalf of San Mateo, because this is really a critical project that has to be done. And really do want to acknowledge all the mitigations that staff has put in, and working with the contractors, and ensuring that noise and dust and traffic are kept to a minimum to really be thinking about what's best for the neighborhood. So, congratulations on that, and I'd be happy to second the motion.
Well, I just, I wanted to ask those questions to make sure the public understood that there's a lot, and this goes way back, and it's a major undertaking. Clearly, this is going to pass tonight. So, I just want to say that this project is a huge undertaking that deserves being questioned from time to time, to make sure that we're actually getting what we need. As Joe questioned, he's not sure whether it's going to be big enough, and some other people are questioning that, well, maybe it's too big. And I've heard from different people, different ways on this subject. What I think is that, at this point, this thing is going forward, and I just want to thank everybody, like I said, the staff who did a lot of work, have taken a lot of knocks, have answered a lot of questions, have attended just tens of public meetings, 50, I think you said. I want to thank also the members of the public who have invested much time getting this project to a point where they find it acceptable, and they're able to work with it, and that they trust that it's going to be everything that we're promising it's going to be. And I want to thank also the people who are going to get out there, and they're going to sweat, and they're going to work hard putting this project in the ground. I'm very proud of the people that we're going to have doing that work. This is bread and butter for them, this is their life. So, I want to thank everybody for bringing this forward. Thank you.
I thank you, Councilmember Benia, for, for, for the questioning, and I learned a whole lot more about hydraulic modeling this week, and I, I got to echo Councilmember Goethels. I think we all, all came to the table asking a lot more questions, so I appreciate the inquisition for sure, and I'm glad we're where we are. We have a motion in a second.
And Madam Mayor, just for clarity, the motion is to adopt the resolution that was in the packet.
That's right. With each of these items here, can we do it collectively?
Just to, to make it clear that the, yes, by one vote, just adoption of the resolution in the, in the.
Correct. That's what we had the motion for, and the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
At Mass, and he knows, passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Okay. That was a big one. All right, so now, I do believe that we will move on to any reports and announcements. Do we have any?
I do have one.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Couple weeks ago, I attended a meeting of the Board of Supervisors, and I believe the city clerk has something to pass out to everybody. The Board of Supervisors passed a climate emergency declaration.
Okay.
And it's an inspirational document that recognizes the difficulties that we're having with our climate change, sea level rise, and, and changes that need to be made, which are difficult, and in some cases costly, and in other cases, people just maybe don't believe. But these are things we all have to deal with. So, the county passed this great resolution, I was there, I was part of it, I spoke in support of it, but I want to ask tonight if the council would consider issuing support support of it, but I want to ask tonight if the council would consider issuing support to the county in the form of our own resolution. If we would consider that, we could have it done at the next meeting, and I would truly appreciate that, and I think many people who are here would also appreciate that.
Deputy Mayor Freskett's in support of it, I'm in support of it, you got unanimous.
Thank you.
Let's take it up next time. Thank you so much for bringing to our attention. Any other reports and announcements?
Oh, yeah, one more.
Okay.
So on Thursday morning, I was in Long Beach at the League of California Cities Annual Conference, where I had the great privilege of swearing in our highly-exalted city clerk, Patrice Olds, as the new president of the League of California Cities Clerks Association. I swore her, as well as the rest of her executive committee, and I was very proud to be able to do that, representing San Mateo there.
Very cool, very cool. Thank you for your service, and thank you, congratulations to you, Madam Clerk, big doings. Any other reports and announcements? Before we convene, or I would like to convene tonight, if there are no more reports and announcements, in memory of one of our own, who was just here with us, I believe, in August, or September, September. Len Trobman was here, and it is, if you'll recall, he was here on the night of his wedding anniversary, but committed enough to come talk about the general plan to us. What an amazing person. Mr. Trobman was very involved with peace talks around the country, and getting people to speak culturally, to sort of put an end to divisions that have happened over many, many years. And so it was kind of cool that he, not only, as a San Mateo resident, did it locally here with us with respect to our general plan, but it has carried out those efforts worldwide. So he was co-founder of the Jewish-Palestinian Living Room Dialogue Group, and a pioneer in Jewish-Palestinian relationship building, and he died unexpectedly on October 4th at the age of 80 years old. He was a renowned pediatric dentist. In 1977, he and his wife moved to San Mateo and settled here for more than four decades. In 1982, the Trobmans co-founded the Beyond War Movement, now known as the Foundation for Global Community. Len was a strong believer in citizen diplomacy. There are things that, he said, "There are things that governments can do that people cannot, like forging binding agreements," he told us in 2002, "and there are things that citizens free of government can do that the governments cannot, like changing human relationships." The Trobman's founded the Jewish-Palestinian Living Room Dialogue Group here in San Mateo, in their home, in their living room in 1992, and along with some Palestinian neighbors. His legacy will live on in dialogues that go on worldwide because of his vision. I feel that we are very much of a richer community for having the likes of Mr. Trobman among us. So if I may, did you have something you wanted to say in addition, or we will have a moment of silence in his memory?
Well, I just want to thank, I was reached out to by a clergy member who also was a good friend of Mr. Trobman. As I have known, Mr. Trobman has been a good friend of many people, truly a man of honor and distinction, who sought to find ways for people to come together and talk about, and try to find solutions to their divisions. She was truly in bereavement, she was seeking some recognition for him. I'm so happy that we have been able to offer this recognition for our hometown person who works so hard to make this world a better place. Thank you very much.
And our condolences go out to his wife Libby, and his son Adam, wife Rachel, and daughter Eleanor, husband Mike, and their three grandchildren. So with that, we'll have a moment of silence, and then we'll adjourn. Okay, please join us in the atrium.